Good evening and welcome to our forum for the Hickman Mills School Board. This forum is sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Kansas City, Jackson, Clay and Platt Counties and the South Kansas City Alliance. I am Anitra Steele and I am a member of this league and the leader of the forum's administrative team. I would like to introduce our co-host, John Sharp, President of the South Kansas City Alliance, to say a few words. Mr. Sharp?
Well, thank you very much. We were very pleased to host this with the League of Women Voters. The League of Women Voters is well-known for having forums and and conducting them completely impartially. I've never heard anybody say, oh, they were biased or they favored one candidate because you guys do it right. So we were pleased to co-sponsor it with you. Thank you so much for doing these. And I would like to thank the candidates for the school board. I've served on the Hickman Mills Board and I know it's a lot of work, but it's really important. And it's just great to see these candidates willing to volunteer their time to help prepare our children for success. So thank you for running.
The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization. We neither support nor oppose candidates or parties. Our mission is to empower voters and to defend our democracy. We envision a democracy where every citizen has the knowledge, the right, the desire and the confidence to participate. Our membership is open to everyone. I'd like you all to know the other league members volunteering with me. Sandy Eads, a past president, is our moderator. Elizabeth Dar is our timekeeper and our Zoom is monitored by Donna Houck. The public has sent in the questions via the league's website, L W V K C dot org. I would like now to turn this over to Mr. Eads.
Thanks, Anitra, and welcome to everyone. I just want to emphasize your vote matters. We're big fans of voting, if you couldn't tell. So tonight we'll learn about candidates for the Hickman Mills School Board who appear on your April 4th ballot. The Board of Education is a volunteer representative body elected by the registered voters of the local public school district. The Board governs the school district and provides leadership and advocacy for public education. School boards make decisions in the best interest of the entire district and they serve a three-year term. For tonight, voters have submitted questions for the candidates via the league's website, L W V K C dot org. Forums last about ninety minutes. I'll ask each candidate the same question selected from those submitted by the public. The order of candidate responses will be determined by random rotation. Each candidate will be given ninety seconds to respond to each question in two minutes for a closing statement. All of the candidates running for these offices have been invited and have accepted our invitation for which we're very grateful. So I'd like to welcome tonight Irene Kendrick, Brandon Wright, Clifford Reagan III and Byron Townsend. This forum is recorded and will be available on the league's webpage, L W B K C dot org. And we'd encourage you to let others know who could not make it tonight to take the time to go to the website and review the answers and responses of our candidates. So for candidates, please answer the question asked, stick to the topic. I think you guys know those rules. There will be no rebuttals, but you may go back to an issue during your two-minute closing remarks. So let's begin. All right, let me find my list of questions. So for each of you, we're going to start with a little bit of introduction so you can give us your background. So starting with Brandon, please tell us about your background and what skills you would bring to the school board.
Sure. So apologies, still getting over cold here. My name is Brandon Wright. I am running for Hickman Mills School Board. I obviously live in Hickman Mills. I live on the north end up in Fairwood, just south of eighty-seventh North Banister. Personally, well professionally, I work in schools. So I'm a former teacher. I am now a data coordinator for districts. I deal with the state a lot. I look at numbers, make sure that everything's on track. We're telling the state how we're doing, how the assessments are going, taking a look at our student achievement. And I think that my experience in that role and as a former classroom teacher can provide me a lot of background going into the position. I've prepared a lot of the information for board members regarding student achievement, attendance and making sure all these things are great. And I know exactly what to look for in order to make sure the district is on track. I'm also involved in a lot of community organizations. I service the co-chair of Hickman Mills United Neighborhoods, which advocates for improvement throughout the area. And I serve as the president of Fairwood Homes Association. I represent six hundred twenty-one homes in our neighborhood. And I advocate for them every single day. I've seen the lack of development in our area and I think a lot of that can be traced back to a school district that is underperforming. I believe that with my leadership and with a good governing board, the district can get back on track and regain accreditation and become the shining star that it once was.
Thank you. Clifford, you're up.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Clifford Reagan. I am presently now on the board. I am a past board member also, and I've also served as the vice president. I would bring to the board very knowledge of what is going on in our district. I also would bring a voice for the community as well as our students and teachers and anyone that approaches me along with my colleagues, making sure that we have all the right data so that therefore no one is being very transparent in what we're doing each and every day. Presently, I've been, I've worked for the school district. I've been a teacher. I've been a substitute teacher, a tutor. I've also been a coach. I've been always in the district for the longest. My kids all attended the Hickman Mills School District. I have a son right now that attends Ruskin High School. He is the last of the Reagans as far as in school, but I do have nieces and nephews that do attend the district. So I'm very well-rounded. I'm a person that with my knowledge and my experience as well as bringing groups together for our district would help make a better district than what we would want today. Thank you.
Thank you. Irene?
Well, thank you for this opportunity and my name is Irene Kendrick and I am running for reelection for the Hickman Mills School District. What I bring to the table, I am currently serving as the vice, as the president of the Warford Elementary PTA. I also have the added advantage of serving in Grandview as the president of the Grandview Arcs Council and as a Parks and Rec Commissioner. I have three grandchildren who currently attend Hickman Mills School in this district. And I look forward to improving the things that we have done in the district by, we are the number one paid teachers now in the district. I'm proud of that. That great opportunity we was able to provide to our teachers. And we've implemented a sixth and seventh grade center of academy and our new Real World Learning Center, vocational center that will be starting with new trades with working with the unions. So I'm very proud of those accomplishments that we have accomplished as a board. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Byron?
Yes, my name's Byron Townsend. I've been the past president. I've been the, I'm currently the president of the Hickman Mills School Board. I've been in the district for thirty-one years. I've had a child in the district for thirty-one straight years. Since nineteen ninety-two, me and my wife have had a child in the district. I'm looking to be reelected for the fourth time. The first couple of times, there wasn't much action. It was more a lot of talking. Then this last, the third, the third term now I was in, I actually became the president. And since I, since that point, we've created a evaluation for the superintendent. We extended the superintendent's contract. We've have a middle school redesign plan. We have a Boys and Girls Club. We passed the bond and levy. Ms. Kendrick also mentioned the trade institute. Got the highest paid teachers and staffed in the area. And I just look to continue to work on the things that we've, we've built in these last couple of years.
Thanks very much. So this next question, Irene will start with you. And there's a little bit of overlap in your introduction here for all of you. But the question goes like this. Do you have or have you had children in Hickman Mills Public Schools? But here's the part that maybe you can expand on. What was your experience with the school board as a parent?
Well, actually, I have had three of my children attend attend the Hickman Mills School Districts. During that time, the school board members, I did attend some meetings at one point, but I wasn't a very active parent during that time. I have to shamefully admit that. But now that I have grandchildren in the district, I am very active in the district, especially with the mentoring program at school and with the PTA as well. The school board during the time that my children were growing up, I believe it was not a lot of communication being provided to the district, to the parents at that time. But I think now currently we have great communication that we provide to our parents and stakeholders now. I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
Of course. Byron, you're next.
Okay. Let me, well, like I said, I've had a child in the district for thirty-one years straight. My experience with the board through my first child was very limited. It was kind of, the only real experience I can remember having with the board was when she graduated and it doing a point where she was about to graduate and there was some issues about the new standards as far as English and stuff and they're, you know, the counselor wants to apply the new standard to the odors, odor, the graduating class. And it was like a week before we grade graduate, she's number, she actually graduated number ten in her class and they were telling me, well, she's have a credit sharp because of, you know, this new standard. So now outside of that, yeah, I really didn't have much until I got on the board, which kind of in like a decade. So it's kind of hard not to interact with the board when you're on the board. So.
Thank you. Thank you. Clifford?
Yes. I've been there for about twenty-four years now in this area. My experience with all my children, especially with my son that I have, that's going to be the last one for right now. My experience with the board has been very pleasant. I've learned a lot through all the past, present and board members that are with me today. I've never had to have, I've learned a lot, which has helped me grow with myself. So as far as I've always been in, I've always been a person who's been in my children's schools. So as far as knowing rules and regulations, that's something that I thrive on is knowing what is the procedures and policies on any of these schools that I go to. I believe that there's something that is very strongly that a board member should always know as well as a parent. So with that being stated, anytime I've always needed anything, I've always could go to anyone and ask any of those former board members and they also have groomed me and I'm thankful for what they have done.
Thank you very much. Brandon?
Yeah. So right now, my wife and I actually don't have any kids. So no, we don't have any kids in the district. But one thing I'm working on is becoming a foster parent. And part of that is, you know, kind of looking at the educational, the school system around here. And that's kind of what drew me into running for board is seeing that we're, you know, eighty-five, eighty-six percent below basic or basic on math around there. So I just want to see the school continue to, district to continue to improve. And that, that is it.
Thanks very much. So first up on the next one is you again, Byron.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, Byron, not Brandon. Byron, this question is, gets a little heavier. What specific measures would you take as a board member to ensure that Hickman Mills moves forward from provisional to accredited status?
Okay. That's, that's kind of a tricky question because right now they just created the IMSA, IMSA six. So the measures that I would take would be the measures that are already in place right now, creating a CSAP and making sure everything is aligned with that CSAP. It's a major part of your points. Board governance, that's another big point issue. Making sure every child is improving. For the longest, there was no points for improvement. It was just whether you scored or not. You scored at a level or not scored at a level. So, so those are some of the things that I would make sure that were being done. But also in reality, I know that the best, at best, we're going to be, we're at least two years out before becoming accredited because we have to get those scores out. We have to get those scores. So.
Okay. Irene, what specific measures would you take to get Hickman Mills to move from provisional to accredited?
Yes, as Byron stated, the scores would definitely be improvement, providing those updated scores and working with the superintendent and the staff to assure that our teachers and our students have the resources needed to be able to improve their reading and test scores as well. And working, currently we're working with Desi closely to improve our board governance and following some guidelines that they have lined out for us to help improve our chances of being accredited and I believe our chances of being accredited in the next two years are great. And, and working with our superintendent and ensuring that our students are successful. That will be my goal.
Thank you. Clifford?
Could you repeat the question, please?
Yes, sir. The question is, what specific measures would you take as a board member to ensure that Hickman Mills moves from provisional to accredited status?
Thank you. Well, the first thing I would do is along with all my colleagues, I would want to look at all the programs that we already have in place to see if they're really functional. And with that being stated, making sure that we have qualified people in those programs to make sure that this is running. A lot of times we, we have to look at this data. As we all know, we haven't been accredited in such a long time and that is the number one goal that is, should be on the target. And sometimes we get so complacent to whereas we believe that maybe it's time for a change and sometimes you have to shake up things, whether it be in the high level or the low levels, we need to shake up some things to make sure that everything is running smoothly the way that the board policies and procedures, because the board's goal is government, is to govern. We only have one employee, which is the superintendent. And we need to all get together and look at all the data. We need to make sure that we're reading it right and making sure that we understand what is going on. A lot of things, a lot of times also, we need to look at this as Mr. Townsend has stated. A lot of this is going to be with how well the board is running and governing over the district. And that is meaning knowing, knowing your policies and procedures, knowing what's going on in your schools, not having to worry about hearing it eighth hand. You should be in the forefront. Our goal is to be out there so that everyone can see that we care about what is going on in this district, but not sitting down behind closed doors. Thank you.
Well, Clifford, you get to stay in the batter's box for the next one. What changes would you like to see in the district?
Get Brandon. Get Brandon, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, I think I didn't answer that one.
Tyler, you want me to do it, sir?
Oh, you didn't. Brandon, if you did not, I apologize. Please go ahead.
Yeah. So the steps that we would need to take is we need to make sure we have that Missouri School Improvement Program six in front of us. We need to have those measures and see where we are in relation to those. As someone who's looked at a lot of that data, I believe Hickman Mills scored around a sixty-two percent roughly. I could be off a couple percent there. It's going off the top of my head. But a lot of that is tied to student achievement. So we need to make sure we're always looking at how are the kids doing on state testing? But how are they doing on the interim tests in between those tests? How are we monitoring the building's progress against each other? For example, if you pull up the data by school in Hickman Mills, you'll actually see there's some very wide gaps in achievement from building to building. We have very remarkably similar demographics across these buildings. So we have to kind of look at that and go, what, what is this building doing that's getting these students to this level of achievement? And how can it be transferred over here? And I think the board just being cognizant of the levels of achievement in each building will help with that. Additionally, as Irene mentioned, good governance is a thing Desi needs to see in order for you to regain accreditation. So I want to make sure that when Hickman Mills makes the news, when the board makes the news, it's for a good thing. It's for man, making the news for being too open and transparent, I guess, something great or some, a new school opening instead of negative things. So I just want to portray the district in a positive light.
Thanks very much. And my apologies again for going over you there. So Clifford, the next question is, what changes would you like to see in the district?
The changes I would like to see in the district, I would like to first of all, look at those programs that are, that we have in play right now. I would like to see more testing done so that therefore we could see where our students are. I come from the private and public sector. I do remember when I was going to school that we had to test into a private school in order to see where our lows and highs were. I would like to see us apply some of those type of tests, dump more of our bond money and some of our monies back into our education. Right now, I think our education is being overlooked. That's why we see such a wide gap. As we have looked, we have scored like sixty-two point eight. That's the lowest in any area in the demographic surroundings. We've been in last place for the longest and it's time to come to the cream of the corn, to the top, you know, excuse. And so I would like to see the testing done in a different way. I would like to see the board more engaged with our community. We are, we are you guys' voice as well as our students and our teachers. I would like to see us more engaged. I don't want us to just be sitting there, as I've stated before, and just voting and we're not knowing what is going on within our own district. A lot of times we hit, we have surveys, we need to be more involved in those surveys so that we will know what the community, what the teachers, what the students would like. We, not only do you have to get, you have to give in order to gain. So if we're not giving, I don't believe we can gain.
Thanks very much. Brandon, what would you like to see change?
I would definitely like to see really a lot more transparency and openness from the board on decision-making and also from the district, great communication with parents. So the parents aren't blindsided when you have a change like going to year-round school. I mean, there was an article, I believe, in the Kansas City Star, might have been KC TV actually, where a lot of parents were like, oh, I'm surprised we're going to. How are we communicating those things with parents to make sure they're aware before that information even becomes public? I would like to see more public involvement at the school board meetings, more opportunity for comment. I believe that's a policy that'll be reworked soon in compliance of the new Missouri law, if I recall. And I would just, I would like to see a board that is not micromanaging because we only have one employee, the superintendent, but is involved in the community. I, as I said earlier, I'm involved in community groups. You don't hear about issues faster than when you go to one of our community meetings and it's the crime and education are going to be the two things they bring up all the time. And every single one of them has, there's twenty of them that got fifty opinions on how things should change in the district, but we have to take those voices into account. So mainly I would focus on making sure public involvement is greatly increased in the district.
Thanks very much. Byron, what would changes would you like to see in the district?
Well, yeah, I would like to see more, I would say patience in the community and not, not to, for the community not to react on issues before they actually hear from the superintendent or from the board. Meaning, you know, there, there was a lot of things that were done last couple of years where it was, well, like when we brought in the Boys and Girls Club, it went out to the community that we were trying to get rid of Link, which was surely not what we were trying to do. We were just trying to bring in another partner and to help, help the students have something else to do. So I would like a little patience with the, with the community and I would like to a little more communication between the superintendent and the board. Because like Mr. Wright said, there was a middle school, I mean, a, not a, a year-round school planned that no one knew about until the board meeting. So yes, I mean, there's, there's some communication issues with the public and there's some communication issues with the superintendent. But for the most part, you know, we're heading on the right path and we should be getting there.
Thank you. Irene, changes you'd like to see?
Yes. I would, I would like to see more communication being provided to our stakeholders and, and our parents. Yes, there was communication sent out regarding our extended school program. I attended two events that people attended and we sent out a survey. So, but also providing more opportunities for our stakeholders to speak at meetings, be able to share their opinions and a voice their concerns. And also to be able to provide a roundtable, maybe quarterly to our stakeholders so that we can address their concerns and, and be able to, to work with our parents and stakeholders and, and communicate to our community as further and to hold the board accountable and be transparent. And that is what our job is, to be accountable and transparent. And that is what I strive for and continue to strive for as a board member. Thank you.
Thank you. This next question is going to be a little interesting, given the current makeup of the group here. In your preparation for serving on the school board, have you met with any current board members or the superintendent to ask questions and gain their perspective? Just reading questions that have been sent in. So, so have, have you met with board members or the superintendent to gain their perspective? If so, what did you learn? They only apply to one person. But you can talk about your conversations with superintendent. And the first one up is Byron.
Okay. I always talk to the superintendent if I, if I have issues, I'll, I'll send him to, I'll send him a question or like, for instance, the other couple of days ago, I was going through the performance reports. And I noticed that Kansas City and Hickman Mills had the exact same averages. So I sent him a question of like, okay, what's going on here? Why do they have the exact same numbers under performance? And I'm thinking, because you know, four different categories for, you know, and the exact same number seemed a little fishy to me. Unfortunately, he hasn't gotten back with me, but you know, that was something that felt was kind of weird. Yeah, but yeah. So those are the type of things that I do. When just on my normal director job is just try to point out inconsistencies or something that's kind of weird.
Thanks. Irene? Thanks. Irene?
Could you repeat the question, please?
Yes, uh, get to, get to it here, I'm sorry. In your preparation for serving on the school board, have you met with any current board members or the superintendent to ask questions and gain their perspective? If so, what did you learn?
Okay, I, well, I do, uh, meet one-on-one with the superintendent every now and then. He does invite each board member to have a one-on-one and sit down with him to discuss our concerns, anything that we like to see moving forward. So, and, and working with our other board members and having open communication with, uh, our other board members. And when I ran the first time for, on, for the school board, I did reach out to that current superintendent, uh, Dr. Cargill at that time and, and work with, uh, Mr. Alvin Brooks. He was one of my mentors when I first got on, signed up to run for the board and he's currently been my mentor ever since. So yes, I've constantly reached out to different board members and former superintendents as well. Thank you.
Very much. Clifford, how about you?
Since joining the board, I have had the, uh, pleasure of talking to Mr. Obin, Superintendent Obin and, uh, uh, with the plans on what his visions are for our, uh, district. Uh, I'm grateful that we're starting to, uh, look at our students as putting in these trades so that therefore, uh, they don't have to go to another district. We can have it right here. Uh, so I'm glad to see that as something that is on the radar, um, for our students, uh, probably in about a year or two. So I'm looking forward to that. As far as talking to, uh, board members, uh, as I've said before, uh, I, I speak to Mr. Townsend a lot. Um, we always have conversation. I've spoken to President Graves a lot. And just being, since I'm new, I really haven't made my way around. Uh, I'm very knowledgeable of everyone that is on the board at this time. Uh, even when I wasn't on the board, I still spoke to all my colleagues, uh, because I believe if you can uh, get your differences out, nobody's, we're not gonna always think the same, but when you come together, you need to speak as one. So, uh, building that family relationship with one another, uh, learning each other to a certain degree. Uh, I think that key creates a strong bond for one another.
Thanks very much. Uh, Brandon?
Yeah, so I've spoken with a few of the current board members. I mean, off the top of my head, um, I've had quite a few conversations with Irene, um, with Beth Berger. A few conversations with Carol Graves also. And with Mr. Obang, I actually was talking to him about two, maybe three weeks ago, actually, um, about, uh, an issue on the other end of the district, uh, on the north side, kind of a neighborhood development issue. Um, so I have reached out to some of those people. Actually, the only people I haven't reached out to are people I just don't have their contact info. But I am open to talking to anybody and willing to reach out to anybody. I've also spoken with, uh, Carrie Palmer, um, the friend who served on the board a few years back, um, to get his advice as well. And I think that I am well-prepared to jump in on day one and help out on the board.
Thanks very much. Brandon, you're still up. Where do you get your information and guidance on education policy?
Uh, so MSBA is gonna be the main guidance for any school board, the Missouri School Boards Association. What that's gonna provide is kind of best practices, guides, trainings for what, what is the trend in education right now and what is best practice? In addition to that, as I work in a different district than Hickman Mills, um, I can also bring in an outside perspective of how we've done things at another district. I deal with a lot of districts with school data, so I can kind of bounce ideas off multiple people. Um, mainly I look at what MSBA has provided for school board members and what Desi expects from school board members. I believe that if you stay within those two things, you shouldn't have any issues. In addition, you need to know the existing policies. So one of the things that I'm working on now is a thorough read-through of all of the board policies. Every school board has policies that affect employment within the district. There are a lot of policies in a district. I can't even tell you how many specifically. It's that many. And I am working through, combing through those to make sure I have a good grasp of those as a potential board member in the Hickman Mills School District.
Thank you very much. Clifford?
I would get, get my edu-, uh, my information from the MSB training. Also with MSBA, uh, they always have a lot of continuing your education, as they call it, with board members. Uh, each year, board members are supposed to go through the MSBA and do the courses in order to get certificates showing that you are grasping the knowledge of what, uh, Missouri, uh, would like for everyone to know. And not only just going to MSBA, there are other conferences like Cube Conference. That's another conference that, uh, uh, you can also attend. Uh, it's also for, uh, school districts like ourselves, uh, who are achieving in low demographics. Also, um, I would also, uh, look at our policy. Uh, that's something that I strongly have always preached, uh, since coming on the board. I believe that, uh, when, um, board members don't know their own policy and everyone else is telling them, then they have lost their governments. Uh, because you are the one that the people put up there to know the governments. Uh, you shouldn't have anyone having to explain your own, uh, your own Bible is what it is. You should never leave home without it. So those are some of the things that you should know and you should strongly get into as a study group or a study guide for yourself that'll help you, um, know pretty much what you can and what you cannot do. So that's where I would get my, uh, knowledge from.
Thanks very much. Irene?
Yes, just as my colleague stated, of course, MSBA will be my first source of, of knowing policies as well as our own board policies. Serving on, I have served on our policy committee, birth during my first term and, and currently I'm serving at, on the policy committee now. And I, I've encouraged each board member to always do review the policies so that we can uh, understand our policies. And I've had, as previous, as previous vice president, I encouraged a working session for all board members to review the policies so that we can update them constantly so that we're constantly aware of what our policies are and to attend conferences as well so that we can get additional training. And, and I encourage that to all our board members and I have attended several, uh, conferences with MSBA and, uh, with the, uh, Cube Conference as well. So yes, continuing education is the most, most important for each board member. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Byron.
Okay, uh, I'm kind of dating myself, but, uh, back in what, twenty-twelve, uh, we had this big audit and they looked at our policies and some of them were kind of outrageous and weren't in line with, um, Missouri statues at all. So at that time, you know, the board went back and Missouri, uh, MSBA sent us policies to, to rework and vote on. And that's kind of the way we still do things now in order to keep from, in order to keep from, um, do, going back to that same situation. And one of the things that I like to do, yeah, is get second, maybe third opinions on policies because a lot of the policies are based in law. So, uh, I kind of, I'll call the attorney or the district attorney and ask her, okay, what exactly does this mean? Uh, or I'll go, or I'll call MSBA and talk to the attorney down there since he's vetted these policies and ask him, hey, what exactly does this mean? It could mean this or it could be, mean that, you know, what is the intent of that policy? So that's kind of what I handle it.
Thank you very much. Uh, so we have a new question here. Irene, we'll start with you. Hickman Mills currently has a graduation rate of eighty-three percent with math proficiency at eight percent and reading proficiency at eighteen percent. All significantly below the state average. Part of the reason for this performance is the amount of churn for students moving from school to school during the school year. What can be done to improve students' educational levels despite their social disadvantages?
Well, what we're currently working on is hiring more reading interventionists to help improve students with reading, providing more teachers and, and smalling the class sizes. Our class sizes are overcrowded now. And with the new pay increase, we have had a abundance of teachers applying to our district. So that will help us with, uh, making smaller classes. So that our teachers have, uh, resources needed, also being able to hire more pairs to help assist the teachers and be have, and having our reading interventionists, uh, that will help improve our, our scores and being engaged with our families. Unfortunately, Hickman Mills is not a developed area. We haven't had new homes built in our area. And our, our population of students are dwindling down because most parents, uh, homeowners are are seniors like myself. So, uh, if I didn't have grandchildren, raising grandchildren, I wouldn't have children in the district. So I encourage, um, more, uh, advocacy for our reading and math programs, uh, to help improve our scores and to keep our parents engaged. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Brandon?
So I think it comes back to the teachers. Um, so I think that the levy that was passed this year, which made um, Hickman Mills teachers the highest paid in the metro, maybe, uh, maybe second highest paid, I think Kansas City Public Schools is trying to top it right now. Uh, but we'll see if we can get that back up to the highest paid in the district. You're gonna see a lot of applications come in. Hickman Mills had a three-year teacher retention rate. Last time I looked this up, forty-one percent, I believe. So forty-one percent of the teachers were retained after three years. That is a high turnover for teachers. When you have that much turnover for teachers, you're not gonna see student achievement improve. Because you're basically becoming the training ground for teachers, which is what Hickman Mills has been treated as by a lot of teachers. I can tell you this as someone who has worked with many of the teachers who formerly worked in Hickman Mills or currently work at Hickman Mills. Um, a lot of times they would get a couple of years' experience at Hickman Mills and then they would go out to the suburbs. Now with that new pay rate, I think you're gonna see that teacher retention rate greatly increase, which will help with this. Additionally, we need to make sure that we are spending the majority of our funds on instruction. We need to make sure that we are spending as much per kid on instruction as, for example, Kansas City Public Schools, where there's a gap of about four thousand dollars and pure per pupil expenditures. Uh, so we just need to make sure that our resources are going into the classroom so that the students can achieve at a higher level, which will help us regain accreditation.
Thanks very much, Byron.
Okay, um, one of the things, you know, I mean, we can't help people that's moving around here, there and everywhere. But I know what Mr. Obin has put in, in a place in the classrooms that allows the teachers to know where our students are right now. And the teachers are able to, uh, give that students the extra help, whether it's a parent or a co-teacher or, you know, a tutor to help that student move forward. Uh, like everyone says, we've, uh, we've passed the levy. We've, uh, increased the, the teachers, the teachers' pay. And, you know, Kansas City is trying to, trying to, uh, I guess, uh, booger, booger teachers or boogeras by, by, uh, making their first-year teachers a higher, paying them at a higher, higher pay. Well, you know, in my opinion, I don't really want a lot of first-year teachers. I think our, our students deserve new, uh, experienced teachers. First-year teachers are not my concern. I want good teachers that have shown that they can teach our kids. So, you know, as far as trying to be the highest step one, I'm, I'm not really concerned about that.
Thank you.
Could you repeat this question, cause I?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I will. Uh, Hickman Mills currently has a graduation rate of eighty-three percent with math proficiency at eight percent and reading proficiency at eighteen percent. All significantly below the state average. Part of the reason for this performance is the amount of churn for students moving from school to school during the school year. What can be done to improve students' education levels despite their social disadvantages?
Thank you. Well, the first thing I would like to see is, um, I would like to see a better, uh, I would like to see student racial, uh, kind of, uh, basically taken down a little bit, uh, student-to-teacher ratio. A lot of times we have too many students in our classrooms and the teacher is not able to do the job that they were there to. By this being an urban school district, I would like to see more, uh, more staff in higher positions like principals, uh, more black and brown, uh, uh, staff that look like the children that are coming in. Uh, we need to either tap into our HBCUs or, uh, whatever is needed. We need to tap in more so that our students will be able to see somebody that look like them, talks like them to a certain degree. There's nothing wrong with multiculturalism and diversity. We need more diverse in our classrooms each and every day. Uh, with that being stated, uh, I would like to see we stop cheating our discipline. Uh, we need for our principals to stand up to be the backbones, uh, that we have them there for. Our teachers are looking for, to them for help when things are going chaotic. So therefore, when something like that is happening, they need to know, hey, listen, I have your back. Uh, we're, we're all in this together. I think if you get that discipline also under control, you will see a little bit, uh, you'll, you'll see steps forward going better. Also with the reading, writing and arithmetic, that has been the lowest thing in our district since I've been on the board. I've served on the board for a long time. Uh, we need to think of something, uh, whereas we could catch our children more, maybe more testing, maybe have a test to see where our children are at. And I think those things will help, help you out.
Thank you very much. You're up still.
Yes, sir.
Okay, a change of pace. The League of Women Voters is devoted to supporting education for good citizenship. What should be included in civics education and at what grade level?
I would like to see that started, uh, at our, uh, elementary, sixth grade, fifth and sixth graders. Uh, I believe that you could start it right then and there with them learning. Uh, right now, we have taken out so much of history. I don't even think we teach in history anymore. Uh, it's been a lack of, of knowing and that's why, a lack of knowledge. And it's sad that we've taken out so many things and we're not focusing on the things that are past, present and future. Uh, children don't even know what it is to do anything when it comes to history. And it's sad, not a, but then it goes back to reading. If you can't, if I can't read, how am I gonna understand what's going on? So now you have, now you have reading that might take away from the child learning. Then you might have discipline. So you got all these factors now in the classroom that is taken away from what we're trying to do here. So I believe that if we can get those things under control and I believe that we should have it in the fifth and sixth grade, uh, and I would like to see that happening at any time. Uh, I would like for our parents to engage in more and trying to get more of those things, uh, put back into our schools. Uh, and I would like to, like I stated, the board to be, uh, on the forefront of those things, looking at these surveys when they're being sent out. A lot of times they say that we're sending out surveys, but ever since I've been on the board, I've never seen a survey come back across the desk where I could say that, hey, this is something that I know about and that's a lack of me.
Thank you very much. Uh, Byron, how about you? When should civics education be brought into the, into the classroom and at what grade level? Byron, oh, there you are. Byron?
Hold on, I needed to unmute. I'm sorry. Civics should be brought in probably in the classroom, probably about fourth grade, cause that's when peo-, kids start changing a little bit. Uh, and one of the things that should be included with civics and civics and, uh, is volunteerism. You know, we have, uh, a lot of districts have volunteer requirements and as far as graduation. I mean, it's one thing to know history and you know how bills are passed and, and voting and stuff like that. But then there's, then it's the other part of being a good citizen. Uh, the sip of, of sip of civics, you know, knowing the, uh, how, how civil rights and stuff were formed and how civil rights and workers' rights and women's- how how civil rights and stuff were formed and how civil rights and workers' rights and women's rights were all part of the civil rights movement. It it's diving deeper. And it should start, you know, fairly early on a lower level. But then advance into a more, you know, mind-provoking types deal once you're, you know, at graduation.
Thanks very much. Uh Brendan, your view?
Yeah, so I strongly believe that civics education actually starts kind of at preschool level. Um so it's kind of what Byron had just stated there about that good citizenship. That's something you're teaching kids before they even get into school age. You're teaching them honesty, you're teaching them integrity, you're teaching them all of these character traits that you want them to have throughout school. And I think that that is kind of the foundation of civics education is is raising responsible children, raising responsible students. As far as formal civics education, I mean, normally you get to that in later elementary school, third, fourth grade. I mean, we all remember um I'm just a bill, yes, I'm only a bill, sitting here on Capitol Hill. We all know the exact how the government works because of uh things from my Schoolhouse Rock and stuff. But that education starts in the later elementary school years. As far as history goes, I think that kids need to be taught all of history, the good, the bad, and the ugly. We have a lot of ugly history in the United States. I mean, look at look at what we did to African-American citizens up to today um in America. We still have structural racism. We need to be teaching the honest history about the United States, which isn't always pretty. Uh so I think overall, my main thing is making sure every kid has access to a high-quality history education.
Thanks very much. Irene?
Yes, civics should be taught at all grade levels. Uh being a good citizen starts early. Uh just as Brandon stated, uh Schoolhouse Rock, uh that it starts early. And as you get older, uh teach more about community structure and how how voting works. How uh being getting involved in uh local government, understanding how how structure, how the structure works. Uh having uh academies like I we in Grandview, we have Citizens Academy where parents and students uh their children can attend to understand how the uh the govern governments work. So uh it should start early in in the school age, uh preschool as well as uh fourth and fifth grades. Uh as a substitute teacher, I work with the Student Union at Grandview High School. A Grandview uh middle school, actually the middle school where they started a a union uh school Student Union and helped them structure a president and vice president and and uh secretary and things like that, understand that their roles and what they can provide to their to their uh classmates and how they can work with uh the principals and teachers. So yes, it should start early in in the grades. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Byron, a new question here. On several occasions, when incidents of fighting or other serious disturbances have occurred, parents are not notified until the end of the day. Apparently, other districts inform parents much more quickly. What is the proper protocol for handling these incidents in your opinion?
To me, the proper protocol would be first, get the incident under control. Then then uh notify the parents if they were uh there was a incident. Uh and let their parents know that, hey, more details will come. Then, once you've notified the parents that the incidents happened, uh then you go ahead and you can investigate. Then at that second go-around, you tell the parents, hey, this is, we did a full investigation. This is what happened. And everybody's clear what happened. They were notified early that, hey, there was an incident. And and you're all good. But what you don't want to do is you don't want to notify the parents and give them bad information. And have them run over, you know, running up to the school and, you know, worrying about this. And you just have to be consistent with it, you know, and and the parents, you know, have confidence and create a a uh not a I have, we'll create a habit of doing it. So it becomes it becomes a habit to parents to know, okay, this this happened and there's gonna be more information to come, so.
Thank you very much. Clifford?
Repeat that question again.
Yes, sir. On several occasions, when incidents of fighting or other serious disturbances have occurred, parents are not notified until the end of the day. Apparently, other districts inform parents much more quickly. What is the proper protocol for handling these incidents in your opinion?
The first thing is get everything under control and uh make sure that there is no one on uh make sure that your students are all under control. And if that has to do with a lockdown, that means that you're locking down. Um the Board of Education has safeties and procedures that we have also given to each and every school. And in those safety uh procedure and protocols, those are the things that should be done. Sometimes uh we we try to skip over those things, which uh sometimes will that's not the great thing to do. Because if you have things that are in play, those are the things that should go in. And uh once something like that happens, those are the protocols, and that's what you should do. Uh so after you get everything taken care of, lockdown or whatever, you need to make sure that you have all the information as uh Mr. Townsend has stated. So that therefore, we won't be giving out just in any incorrect information at all. Because that that right there, too, will make sure that that'll cause a lot of 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 tragic things going on with parents. Because parents are gonna be running up there trying to see what is going on with their students. Uh last but leasty, I want to see how to prevent it so that it does not never happen. Uh I know that before we have had metal detectors in schools, I don't know if we're using them still anymore. But I think we have got too complacent so that therefore, when you get complacent and children see that you're getting complacent, then they take advantage of you. So we're not practicing these policies and procedures. What's the use of having?
Thanks very much. Irene, what's your take?
Uh I'm sorry to ask you to repeat the question. I'm sorry.
No, not a problem. It says, on several occasions, when incidents of fighting or other serious disturbances have occurred, parents are not notified until the end of the day. Apparently, other districts inform parents much more quickly. What is the proper protocol for handling these incidents in your opinion?
Well, the proper protocol wants was once the situation is under control, uh our communications director provides sends out a communication to those parents and let them know of of the situation. That is being done currently. Uh if something's going on in the district, uh the communication director reaches out to the parents directly or the principal does. Uh and then that communication is sent out to the board members. Uh following the pro- proper protocol to ensure the safety of our children is forefront for our principals and our teachers. And we do have policies in place for that. Yes, communication has to be the forefront of reaching out to our parents as well as investigation to ensure that we are following the right protocols as well and ensure that our students either if they need to be on suspension or in school suspension, what what structure is being provided to those students and ensuring that our students are safe and our teachers are safe. That is our main goal, and communication should be sent out and is sent out early enough to be uh to our parents. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Brandon.
Sure. So after, as everyone said, after you've got the incident under control, um one thing most districts do, the district I work for does this, Hickman, from the policy that Irene just described, does something similar. Is you're building a level administrator, your principal, your assistant principal, or your communications department, if they're available to do so quickly, will send out a quick blurb to parents. It's more or less something that says, hey, there was a, you might hear that there was a fight at our school today. That is correct. We are investigating issue. There were no injuries. Everybody's okay. I always kind of start with that with messages to parents when it's been a fight or something in my job. I might coordinate transportation for the district also that I work for. So I'd send a lot of communications about issues on the bus. I always say they're safe, everybody's safe, and we just kind of give them a generic estate, an issue happened very quickly. The actual details, um you don't really need to go into deep detail what happened with the with the the majority of the parents. I mean, that really needs to be left to the students who were involved in the incident itself as to what happened there. So usually, all you're doing is essentially saying, hey, there was a fight and we are taking care of it. And making sure that we're reassuring the parents that their students are safe. Thank you.
Thanks. Um Irene, you're up first on this one. What are your thoughts about the trend of moving to a four-day school week? Would you be open to supporting a year-round school schedule? So two different questions.
Well, uh I wouldn't be in favor of a four-day school, especially as a parent. I would not be in favor of that because that would uh require extra daycare fees for parents that may not be able to afford that. Uh the year-round school, I'm in one hundred percent in favor of that. Um I uh I'm looking into our pilot program currently that we will be starting at Ingalls Elementary. I think that would be an excellent pilot program for us to see how it it does work. I know that my sister's children that grew up in Hawaii, they had year-round school. So uh and I I like that idea. I think that would be excellent uh opportunity for our students. And I would be the first one to enroll my grandchildren in all-year school. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Brendan, you're up.
So on a four-day school week, um by default, no. Um I see the appeal of it for staff retention and recruitment. Um as a teacher myself, I I I'll tell you, I looked long and hard at some of the job posting independence for next year after I saw that they were moving to a four-day school week. However, once you take into account that a lot of parents are relying on schools to provide childcare, how do you get around that issue? Are you providing daycare on one day at a reduced cost to parents? If so, is it on a sliding scale where they can afford it? Are we having to decrease our instructional funding in order to fund that daycare program? So to me, um I am generally against a four-day school week. However, um year-round school, I tend to be more in favor of. And I can't speak specifically to the pilot at Hickman Mills. But as a teacher, the main issue you have when you start the year is the the learning loss, the knowledge gap between the students, what they knew in May and what they now know in August. That is almost three months between instruction to instruction. Every single student forgets something. And I taught band. I can't imagine how it is when you're teaching math. Um so just having that knowledge gap removed by essentially having year-round school with four to six-week breaks in between uh each quarter, uh it sounds like a winner to me.
Thanks very much. Clifford, what do you think?
Uh with the four-day school, I would be against uh four-day schools. And as far as all year round, when you think about all year round, you start to think about uh taking out what a child is looking forward to, which is the summertime. Um it's 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 not fair to them because of a struggling district to go all year round. That's not, that's just not fair to them. Uh what we need to start looking at is ways that we could assist with with this this gap that we have here in our district. And as I stated before, we need to start pouring more money into our educational system. We need to look at our curriculum. We need to uh look at uh not only what what is the child wanting? Like I said before, it's a give, give and take, take. Uh we give, we require. But if you're if you're trying to just do all-year-round schools, I would not be a type of person that would be uh would go for that. Uh because I think a child is uh going to school each and every day. And then when the summertime, a lot of times you see this is when families are together, they're traveling. That's when you see some of your athletes uh playing AAU ball. So therefore, they would have to uh juggle all that. Now, don't get me wrong, if you go to a higher learning, you're gonna have to juggle all that when you're out on the road playing in these higher institutions. But our job as an elementary, as a secondary school, is to see where we could uh close this gap. If closing the gap is that. All right, thank you.
Thanks very much, Byron. How how do you see it?
I I I definitely don't, I'm not for the four-day. For, you know, not only the childcare, but our district is a uh food insecure district, so uh you know, children would be missing meals and, you know, that's, you know, it's just adding to more social problems. But as far as a a year-round, I'm I'm pretty confident I I'm I'm for that. I've talked to a number of, because I'm a letter carrier, I get to talk to a number of different people. And I've talked to a number of different people who had children in uh all-year-round schools. And parents tend to love it. Uh our military, their schools are all-year-round. So uh students, you know, that are used to all-year-round school, they don't know anything else, have no problem with it. It's the students that are used to another type of system that tend to have problems with, no, the full the full year. But that's just human nature in its own. As humans, we just don't like change.
Thanks very much. Okay, the the next one is for the legislature here. Uh Brendan, uh the Missouri House has passed a bill that is now headed to the Senate and then the governor. That would allow public school district students to transfer to a non-resident public school district. How would this affect the Hickman Mills School District?
That would be a very large net negative for the school district. Essentially, what you would see is some of the students who have more involved parents, um who generally tend to be some of your higher achieving students all of a sudden just being whisked away. And let's not kid ourselves either. While they'll say, oh, they can't transfer for athletic reasons, you're gonna see a lot of that, too. I'll tell you right now. Um every single coach is gonna be trying to poach kids from other buildings in order to get their program to be more competitive. Um to me, it's the loser of a bill. I mean, we just do not want, you need strong neighborhood public schools. You don't build a strong Hickman Mills community by having your best and brightest students going out to Lee Summit or up to Liberty or North Kansas City. You, we want to rebuild the Hickman Mills area. We need to educate our own students and we need to, well, we need to educate our own students. Um as simple as that. So I strongly oppose that bill, and I strongly oppose any effort to divert resources from neighborhood public schools. Thank you.
Thanks. Uh Irene, what's your take?
My my take is that um ye- yes, it would take dollars from our district. It would it would hurt our Hickman Mills School District tremendously. As Brandon stated, it would take our brightest students away. And of course, uh there are some form of pulling our athletes away as well. Uh definitely, that would take funds from our district and that wouldn't be a good uh good for our district. I know that the bill has uh is in the process of passing or has passed, as you stated. Um and I think Hickman Mills has a two-year uh waiver during that time. Um but um um I do not want uh to lose our students due to this bill.
Thanks very much. Uh Byron, how do you see it?
Yeah, with her district, yeah. To me, our, my, to me, from what I've seen, in our district, if you have a student that wants to learn and is talented, they can get just as good education in our district as any other district. I know uh my my family has had asked me several times to have my children go to other schools, whether it was Lincoln, Belton, or whatnot. I'm like, no, I'm here. I'm here at Hickman. I believe they can get a good education at Hickman. And they did get a good education at Hickman, despite being provisionally accredited. And all my uh my second, my middle daughter, uh she graduated ninth in her class. She went on to college. My second, my middle daughter, uh, she graduated ninth in her class. She went on to college to get a biology degree. In four years. So I, I truly believe. That if you want to get a good education, we have the resources to do it. I mean, we have all type of scholars going on to, uh. Schools, you know, you, schools and universities and succeeding. So. Some, the people that just leave for, you know. Because they believe other districts are better or, you know, I think they just do it. Not because of the district, but because of some preconceived ideal.
Sure. Clifford, uh, your, your points.
Yes, sir. Could you read that question again, please?
I'd be happy to. It says that the Missouri House has passed a bill. That is now headed to the Senate and then to the governor. That would allow public school district students to transfer to a non-resident public school district. How would this affect Hickman Mills?
Well, right now, uh, even before the bill, it's already affecting us anyway because we don't have accreditation. Um, this bill will totally annihilate us because it would allow our students. Uh, not only if they're academic, whether they're athletes. Uh, but this will allow them to go wherever they would like, whereas, whereas, uh, the school district would have to pay for them to get there. Uh, what I would like to see for us to do is to take this challenge. And before I go any further, we have a strong advocate down there right now, which is Mr. Sharp. Uh, he's down there, uh, advocating on our behalf each and every day. Uh, so I want to thank him for doing the things that he is doing for the Hickman Mills School District. Uh, every time we go to a meeting or anytime we hear his name, we hear good things about it. He's advocating for our district. So I would like to thank him for that right now. But with that being stated, I, I would like to, for, uh, our district to look at this as a challenge. To, uh, make sure that we have to qualify to certify people who are making, uh, all these decisions. For our children right now, uh, that they will take this as the challenge and, and start, um. Start just getting bare down with everything. Uh, it's time now to stop playing. And, and shaking. It's time to do what we supposed to do. And that is teach our children so that therefore they could, uh, go forward and to also make them feel like they're wanted. When they're, they're in the classroom also. And not only our students, but also our teachers. Uh, we want them to feel good that they're there along with our principals. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. And you're, you're still up.
Yes, sir.
So, so the, the next question is, do you support placement of mental health therapists in each school and why?
You said, I, do I support?
Yes, do you support the placement of mental health therapists in each school and why?
Uh, yes, I do support placing, uh, mental health, uh, personnel in each school. Uh, but I want to, uh, put an emphasis on this certified, uh, personnel in the schools. Uh, we don't want to have a substitute personnel if we're going to get, let's get the real thing. Uh, don't do anything, uh, without getting the real thing. And reason why is because we're. Uh, in this day and time, we're, we're, we're dealing with so many different things. Uh, whereas you and I did not have to come under and we don't have a real understanding. Of the things that are going on in a child's life each and every day, or not only in the child's life, whatever might be going on in the parent's life also. So when you have this, uh, when you have someone who has majored in something like that, instead of having someone that you're training. That really doesn't really understand the variables, um, then therefore some things can be overlooked. So with that being stated, I would support having a, a mental health person inside of each school. Uh, whereas therefore we would have those services for our students, not only our students. Uh, maybe for our teachers too. They might be going through some things and they might need some help. And then we might need to go a little farther. We might have some parents that might need those services. So we need to also be able to offer it to them also. So I would support that a hundred and twenty percent to the infinity. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Byron, uh, how do you see this?
Uh, well, I got two words for you. Social media. So it's played such a big part in kids' and students' lives now. So. Yes, we, we do need, uh, mental health professionals in each and every building. I mean, mental, mental health and physical health should go together. We have nurses in there for. Our physical symptoms. We should have, uh. Therapists or professionals in there for our mental symptoms. I mean, that's the, uh. We're under an antiquated model that only deals with the physical aspects of our students. And we need to step into, um, a more modern role. Where we're actually looking at, you know, the mental aspects of our students along with the physical.
Thanks very much. Um, Brendan.
Yeah, so one hundred percent I would support more licensed mental health professional, professionals in every building. I think often we forget that we actually do have a lot of certified counselors, uh, who do work in our buildings who. While they are generally guidance counselors, they also do have that mental health. Training, but a lot of times they don't get time to actually go and have one-on-one discussions with kids about the issues that they're struggling with. So we need more of those personnel in the building in order to make sure that the students' mental health needs are being met. Uh, and I think that the school is kind of uniquely positioned in American society to provide that help. And you can, you can hire directly. You can, there's nonprofits that you can work with. Communities and schools is one that comes to mind that provides licensed clinical social workers to buildings. You can work with the Matty Road Center. Up in Kansas City. You can work with a lot of different organizations to make sure we're providing opportunities for students to get mental health supports. If a student is not in the right state of mind, that student is never going to reach their full potential. They will not be able to get proficient or advanced on a state assessment. If they are crippling, struggling with crippling anxiety, or if they are struggling with depression. Or if they're being bullied at school all day, they probably won't show up and they can't learn the things they need for those tests. So I one hundred percent think we need more mental health professionals in every building.
Thanks very much. Irene.
Yes, we, uh, absolutely. We need, uh, mental health professionals in, uh, in our schools. In our schools, our counselors are over tasked with testing and scheduling and things like that. And don't have the time or the capability to work with our students. Cause our kids are, some students, we don't understand the trauma they have to experience before they come to school. So we need those, uh, professionals on hand to be able to deal with those, uh, students and to help provide. Uh, different strategies for them as well. Uh, I know that with my grandson, uh, we have a, a behavior therapist that comes into the school. And works with him twice a week, uh, gives him, uh. A task to understand how to control his anger or what he needs to do to count down. Or if to communicate better or to be able to go to a calming corner. They do have some places in the schools, like a safety team to work with students who have behavior issues. Or may have some type of trauma that they're dealing with. So, uh, having certified, highly qualified. Uh, counselors and, uh, mental health professionals is, uh, highly, uh, recommended. And I would support that one hundred percent.
Thank you very much. So we're at that part of our program where I think it's time for our, our closing remarks. As I mentioned before, we're going to, uh, we're going to do this in reverse alphabetical order. So. Uh, Brandon, uh, you've got two minutes, but I want to take a moment for you guys, uh, to thank you very much for all showing up. And putting the time and effort that you have into this forum. I think the voters will really appreciate the ability to see your remarks. And, uh, thank you very much for the service you've done. So without further ado, Brandon, you can start your closing now.
Sure. So, uh, first thing, I would appreciate anybody's vote, um, this upcoming election. It is a week out now from April fourth. I believe that I am a highly qualified candidate for this position for a number of reasons. I think that my work experience. Being in a public schools for about eight years now, um, first part of that as a teacher, second part of that as a data and transportation coordinator. Allows me to have a lot of insights into how things should run. And allows me to make sure the things the superintendent is running the schools in a way, which I believe he is in general right now. That is keeping the school district on track for reaccreditation. Secondly, I believe that my focus on student achievement will make sure that we do regain accreditation. I believe that if the board members make every single decision, which I think they do in their hearts right now. Based on what they think is best for students, that we will have no problem. Working and regaining reaccredited, regaining accreditation. And lastly, I want to make sure people know, um, I am going to be one hundred percent accountable to the public. I am involved in community groups. You can email me. My email is online. You can find it easily. You can message me on Facebook. If you're a parent or anybody who has a concern with the districts, and if I get elected on April fourth, reach out to me when you have a problem. Reach out. If you've, if you're having trouble with something, I would love to be able to be an advocate for you. Uh, so with all of that, um, I ask for your vote on April fourth. As someone who's passionate about education and does it for his career, I think that I could do a pretty good job as a director for this district. Thank you.
Brandon, thanks very much. Byron, uh, love to hear from you.
Alright, uh, yes, uh, I would like to have your vote on April, April the fourth also, um. I have, I have, um, been on the board, been elected three times and looking. For this fourth, this fourth term to continue the work that has been started, uh, these last couple of years. I, I know that, um, we've had situations in the, uh. Past that, uh, where, you know, boards couldn't get together and. I can, I tend to be the very most, uh, probably the most middle of the road person you've ever. You know, e- ever seen. I don't get too high. I don't get too low. Um, um, but you see, it's pretty much where I am most days. And an- another thing is, um. I've, you know, I've been elected, I've been elected three times. I've, uh. Had, this will be my fourth campaign. And of those campaigns, I, I've never taken. Any, in the last two campaigns, I haven't taken any donations, any dollars from any groups from anywhere. So I don't owe, I don't owe anybody anything. Uh. There's, you know. I get to make my own decisions, you know, I, I don't owe this, you know. This group didn't hit, this person didn't give me dollars to buy signs or whatnot or. Send out mailers or any of that other stuff. I, I'm my own person. Uh. Since two thousand seventeen, I've only taken in two hundred dollars. For, for campaigns. So, I mean, I pretty much spend my own money and do my own thing. That way I don't have to owe anyone.
Thanks very much. Clifford.
On our, uh, on Tuesday, April the fourth, when you vote, you're going to vote for a person that's, uh, a leader. He's a leader for the community. He's going to be a leader for the students. He's going to be a leader for the teachers. And he's going to have your voice always in the back, in the, and in the front of his mind when, uh, when we're in those meetings. Uh, I will, I want us to always, the, the achievements that we have set forward in front of us right now. We can, we can achieve those goals, but we're going to have to be able to achieve those goals by not just sitting up here, just telling you what we want you to hear. Uh, when you see me, I'm gonna be about the walk. I'm gonna be not just tall. I'm gonna be about the walk. I'm gonna go on those trenches. Where teachers and students might not think that they have an ear, but they're going to have an ear. So when you vote for me, these are the things that are coming with me. Uh, sometimes we look at things, uh, when a person is, uh, a leader, we look at them in a, in a, uh. Very bad way, but a leader, you cannot, a person that is a leader is always going to stand out amongst everyone. He's not going to sit around and just sit on, in, in the store and be like a statue. He's going to come out. He's going to be upfront. He's going to be knowledgeable. That's something that you're going to have with me. I'm going to be knowledgeable. Those builders that are not, uh, not being done and people are talking about them. Punch, the, uh, punch orders are not coming across the desk without me ask. So therefore I'm going to be your voice. Those teachers that are not wanting to be here, uh, and we're still allowing them to be here. I'm going to be your voice. Those students that might have a problem, we're going to have to figure it all out together. I'm going to be your voice. So on Tuesday, April the fourth, when you vote for Clifford Reagan the third, in which I know you guys will do. I have no for, I don't, I don't have no doubt in my mind that you will go around and be disappointed. Because you know that a change is coming and that's what the Hickman Mills School District needs, a change. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Irene.
Well, thank you again for this opportunity. I'm asking for your vote to continue the work. Uh, to be a champion for our students and our teachers, uh, to ensure our children have the resources needed to be workforce ready. Uh, to provide physical oversight of our, uh, bond funds and to ensure accountability. And transparency is provided to our parents and to our stakeholders. Help me to continue the work of empowering our students to know that they are a great generation by reelecting me. On April the fourth. Thank you for your time.
Thanks very much. And, uh, thanks again to all of the candidates for giving us your sincere remarks, uh, and to these questions. Um, so with that, Nitra, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Sandy. Thank you. Thank you, audience, for your thought provoking questions and your interest in the April fourth election. A recording of this forum will be available on the league's website, L W V K C dot org. Please take a moment to share our candidate forums via your Facebook page, Nextdoor. And other favorite social media channels. And remember, for complete voting and candidate information, visit L W V K C dot org. And vote four one one. Thank you, candidates, very much for being here. It was very informative. And illuminating. Good luck at the election. Good night.
Thank you. Thank you very much.